The order, start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
By the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got one item on these agenda tonight, that's basically Silo rigged in the status submission. So Pedro, did you want to talk about the submission status at this point?
So, we just came from, you want me to give an update of our meeting today?
Might as well, sure.
So, we had a good meeting today with Marion Johnson, Julie McElroy, and Dave Everett, as well as Eric McEnroe and the chairman. The, we discussed four items that we're still reviewing. One is the bonding, and we hopefully will have a draft memo and a draft cost for the town's review and consideration soon. We also have a, we reviewed the guidance on the public overlook. It was suggested that we discuss it with the town board directly as well. But in the meantime, we're going to submit our plans, very similar to the plans that were submitted in August 21st. The only difference is we're taking the trees that seem to be a problem. And we're going to include those as part of our waivers in there. So those will be there. We also discussed the change protocol, or the request for changes. The, we're going back and forth. We're going to submit some comments back to Julie, and hopefully try to resolve that so we can present it to the board for their review and consideration. And the other thing we spoke about was the status of our submission. And we're 99% there, I think. Well, one thing that has been holding us back has been the, which is one of the comments we had is, we have so many comments that are the same comment, but drafted, very similar by different, either a different consultant or different, or a public comment, that it is being pretty cumbersome to make sure that all the documents are consistent with each other, and then you have an answer that doesn't, that is also consistent with the other. So, one thing that we asked in the future was to take into consideration when we get future comments from the planning consultants, so that we have one set of comments and not have the same comment repeated three times, maybe drafted a little bit different by each different consultant. This becomes very cumbersome. Other than that, we should be able to provide the, hopefully the plans. We were really hoping that we could have submitted today. They're not yet there. One thing we really want to avoid after waiting all this time, and you submit something that's going to have changes and more comments on it. So, at this time, I don't think we'll have it ready this weekend, right? So, we're not changing, we're not submitting, are we submitting this week or next week?
Hopefully by Friday if not Monday.
Okay. And Juan just mentioned something on the public overlook, the landscaping plans right now, I thought we were showing the shrubs.
Wild flowers.
So, wild flowers on the...
Before you had shrubs and different types of heights of shrubs, benches and stuff. Right now, there's no benches.
I thought we had the benches in there.
Well, let's do this. We talked tonight, you know, we talked about with Dave, myself, meeting with Victoria Perotti, and maybe Vicky Doyle too. Vicky had a lot of, Vicky Doyle had a lot of input on the, in the letter that she submitted. And we'll sit down with them and we'll see if we can get that process kicked in here as far as giving some direction what we have looked for there. But in the meantime, mine should be on, yeah. Got it?
Volume maybe? Okay. Okay, perfect. Yeah, we just need direction. Like I said, you know, we're trying to make sure the plans are consistent with what the town's going to want. And then finally, the other thing we discussed was the final changes to the design guidelines, which they're pretty much there already. So, is this something that we will be submitting to the planning board, Dave, or something that the consultants will be submitting for the planning board for consideration?
Why don't you, as you mentioned, include it? Sorry, I was going to say, once we finalize it, which has that minor change of your stuff, I want to just try to include it in the submission.
Is an appendix on the MDP, I just didn't know if you wanted it. Okay. Perfect. So, you know, we're excited to submit the new plan. We've made a substantial amount of revisions based on a lot of the public comments and consultant comments. So I think some of the addresses, I think, the vast majority of all the questions and concerns that people had. So hopefully, we can submit it by the end of this week, if not, middle of next week.
Now, Juan, are you clear as far as the planning board members of whom wants what, as far as hard copy versus digital?
Well, I understood most people want digital.
Yeah, the last one, everybody was getting digital. They haven't asked for specific ones if they wanted.
Okay.
So, I said now I'll have digital.
Okay. Are we submitting also the plans digital too?
Yeah, every single one of them is digital.
Okay. We will have a...
Oh, we use the drive, probably all with every single one.
We will have a brand new submission, including all documents for the town and the library. All...
So, the submission includes a lot of the old, older documents that we're just making sure we reprint them again, just in case, you know, it's a complex submission.
We've also tried to put them in five different volumes, so they're, with a table of content, so the documents are a lot easier to find versus having to go through.
How soon after you make your submission will you have documents up on your website?
We'll have them up right away, or not?
Yeah, I can have them up pretty quick. So, maybe for some less than, maybe a day or two. I'll start working on it, and I'll keep the website off, and then once we send it, I'll turn it on. So, I'll have them on within a day or two.
Okay, and then we'll have, just like we did last, kind of link from the town's website to Silo's site, so everybody looking.
Right off the top.
Yeah, it'll be the same site as the old one.
Do you have anything else you want to cover tonight? Let me handle it. At this point, board, a lot of people, I didn't break the board, that's questionable.
I didn't see any mention regarding the retaining walls and a few of the estate homes that are sort of up on the slope, and how that cut and fill is going to take place.
Yeah, each kind of fill ultimately is going to be done custom, so each house is going to be developed that time. The, right now, the design guidelines prohibit anybody from having a retaining wall larger than eight feet, which is going to encourage people to utilize the house itself as a retaining wall rather than a standard floor plan like the way we have in there. The other thing that is going to limit people from also doing that is you have to stay within the constraints of that ADA, which is, is going to pretty much make sure that everybody, you really decide that house on the shallowest portion, or you decide that house where it tears up the hill. I know there was a comment with regards to the retaining walls on George James' memo, and I think the comment read us if we didn't have the retaining walls on the visual analysis, but they were actually in there. They're all in there. It's just when you're trying to look them from a mile and a half away, even if they're at 20 feet, you still can't see them. In terms of the roads, I think the largest retaining wall we have right now is four feet. With, in several instances, we do have total retaining walls, so you have a four foot and then a three foot on top of it, and then you have planters in between. Yeah. And, you know, and we're going to be encouraging that. I think that will look much better than than a large retaining wall. So, if you actually see the design that we have, wherever you see two retaining walls on the homes itself, is because we were doing that. We do have, retainables are larger than eight feet in the village green, because all the driveways going into, under the buildings required to have. So those are, I think, 11 feet or so.
I wonder if we could possibly include in the design guidelines some sort of rule of thumb regarding placing the garage underneath the house, or sort of, since you're going to have to be doing, well, might rethink that question a little bit. Let me think about that.
It depends on every site. So, for example, we have a side that is uphill. Sometimes you might have a garage that is detached from the house, that helps you with that. You might have a garage that is below the house. One thing that we know is that the garage, by code, cannot be higher than the first floor elevation of the house, if it's connected to each other. So, but a lot of that is going to be each custom homeowner interpreting the design guidelines we did. And I think by, right now, by, if you look at the, where you have those ADAs, and with the constraints you have between height, retaining walls, grading disturbances, and having to place also additional landscaping, is really going to, is really going to make sure, a lot of the things you're talking about, they're going to have to do that in order to actually place the house in there. So, all those things will come into place.
The design guidelines contain a provision that addresses your concern. And it basically, as we meet right now, and obviously this is subject to approval, is shown on the amended MDP plans, when buildings on slopes take advantage of the geography by building multi-level structures with more than one level, e.g. workout basements, garages, under buildings, rather than creating the entire site flat. That's the way it's currently written. So, I've requested that that be changed, because if somebody comes in, they just want to build a house with one story on one level, there wouldn't need to be a step-down approach. So, Julie's going to make some minor changes to that, to incorporate that concept that Silo wanted added in here. But that general provision there in the other Q, I think is sort of getting to the concept that you were addressing.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to Dave's point, I think what happens is, there are a handful of lots that a tiered house won't work. You know, essentially where you look at the lot where it is, it would have to be a single-story house, or it would be multi-level, but not terracing on, because it's completely flat. So, that's why we were concerned when reviewing that paragraph. If you read it, and strictly say, okay, do every single house is going to comply with that, some lots might actually be worse if you try to do that. So, Julie's going to work on the language too.
Any other questions for anybody?
Is that all we got?
That's it.
So, essentially, you have, the ADA is 30,000 square feet, which is, what's that, like?
300.
500 by...
No, no, a lot less than that.
No, no, no.
It's like 2/3 of an acre.
40,000 square foot an acre is 208 by 208, so.
Okay, so...
It's less than an acre.
So, that's like 200 by...
You're talking like 175, 175, I don't know.
Yeah.
Ballpark?
Maybe a little less.
I'm just trying to imagine.
You're going to end up using pretty close to 30,000 square foot by the time you excavate bulldozes, and that 30,000, I swear a fuck, gets really tight in a hurry.
I can tell you just by when we graded it, putting those type of houses, you had to be really conscious of which way the house you were rotating, and not rotating it just to fit the grading within the 30,000.
The 30,000 square feet also was a random number that came out of the code, which is the amount that you allow to clear the SPO. And that's why that number was chosen.
Okay. And that's also, of course, including the driveway and the access to the lot.
You're not included.
No.
Okay, it doesn't include the driveway.
So wherever it doesn't include the driveway, we've provided for driveway envelopes. So we said, this is the only place where you can put the driveway, to make sure someone doesn't put the driveway in a different place. We've looked at each ADA to ensure that, two things. One is trying to minimize steep slope disturbance. Two is also trying to understand where, you know, where the potential driveway would work best to access that lot and get to that location. And third, also to minimize downslope disturbance, because a lot of times, it might be better to have even the house pushed a little bit more into steep slopes, and then not disturb downslope, because downslope is going to minimize visual. So that was the trade-off as we were looking at the placing of those.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I guess regarding the overlook part, can I, as I look at the plot that we got from last time, I just wonder how, how much right the town has itself to put a parking lot right in the SPO. You know, and if there might be a better place to situate that, because now, as you come down Delaware and Hill, and you try, and you imagine, I guess the line you have up there sort of delineate where the park is going to be.
That's kind of where the parking lot and...
The sidewalk, right in the parking lot. As you're coming down the hill, it just appears like for that area to be the parking lot, maybe isn't the best place for it, just because you'll see cars basically in the view shed, and I just wonder...
No, the parking is way back. So what you can actually see from the road, that's the walkway, the parking is actually very close to Mrs. McEnroe's driveway.
Oh, the parking, you mean?
Yeah, so essentially, if you, the entrance is right across the street from Mrs. McEnroe. So, you would actually come down, pretty quick down, and the parking would be right there, and then you would walk. So what you actually see flagged there is the walkway all the way out. The parking lot would be in the same proximity to 44, but it would be way further back than where it currently is. So you probably won't see the amount of those cars that much.
Where the guardrail, so you have the guardrail there now?
That's kind of where the parking lot would be.
Okay. Because, yeah, that's kind of, I think we're on the same page as far as the location. But I just wonder how that's going to look, you know, if you have half a dozen cars parked there, and it's the SPO and what...
You're going to see a, you're going to see a regard regarding whether we put it anywhere in that vicinity, you're going to see those cars.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I'm just questioning the town's, the town's ability or right to just sort of, to take that and really without having to go through the, well, we're trying to work together with them, but they don't necessarily have to go through the same process that an applicant...
No, but we did.
It's part of this approval.
So we did. We had, it's in the same location as it was before. He went through the secret process. So we're not changing it. I think that the main reason why we thought it was better for us to donate it to the town is, when it comes to the future, it's a lot easier for the town to dictate how they want to operate it, how they want to run it, how they want to manage it. If we were to keep it and own it ourselves, then we would manage completely different. And we, it would be restrictive to what we want to do.
But it would also be a lot more difficult for you to come before us to propose putting a parking lot in a 100-foot block.
It's in our approvals. It's in our approvals, and it's part of a...
The 2009 approvals.
And it's part of our waiver list. It's all in there.
So I thought the town park dedication then was a recent thing, in that it wasn't necessarily...
No, so the park dedication was always there. It's just the vehicle in which we were dedicated, no one had figured it out, okay, are we deeding it to the town, or are we keeping it open and have a park there? So that's been the difference. And then, one of the things that was changed was because it was, I think, the direction we got was, it would be better if we did it and donated to the town. Then when we took it, we took every infrastructure associated with that, with our project, that's within that location, we took it out of there. So we moved the water treatment tank and all those stuff out of there, and we created its own parcel. Rather, before, it was just going to be part of our property. And that's, I think, the main difference. And, you know, like we discussed today, if it comes where to, where we need to keep it, we'll happily keep it. We have no problem keeping it and not donating it to the town. But it will be operated under our own supervision, including, you know, we wouldn't feel comfortable having it operated after hours, or in the winter, or that kind of stuff.
Yeah, basically, and just to return on the approval part for this, it's being approved as if it were a piece of property that Silo is seeking approval on. It's part of their submission.
Okay.
So there's, there's no town exemption being utilized or anything like that.
See, I guess my concern is being the location of the parking lot as you come down the hill, and, you know, having half a dozen cars parked pretty close to the road and so forth.
Can we just clarify then, before you go on, because I want to make sure I understood what the interchange was. Is the idea that, this is non, sorry, is the idea that whatever comes before us is the same regardless of the applicant? Because it would be my assumption that there would be slightly different regulations for public property.
I'm not talking to that. I'm just saying that the application is being submitted as, by Silo, with the park included, Silo's application. That's all.
Then after it's approved, then they would deed it over to the town?
We actually, we did it over after we built it.
Yeah.
So, whether we approve it that way, or whether it has been approved that way, should be a function of what's going to be done with it, whether it's going to be a town park or something else?
It's going to be...
At the end of the day, it's a town park.
A town park, yeah.
It's just who owns it. The town might own it, or we might own it. But at the end of the day, the property itself would be a town park.
So you're saying it's the same regardless of who owns it?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think I agree with you.
But it's just it'd be managed differently.
Yeah.
It will be...
Legally, it would be completely different for a public property.
Correct. After we donate it, correct. After it's donated, it would be completely different if we were to donate it to the town.
Right. And if you're not going to donate it, then we'll take a different stance toward it. I mean, it's a different thing when we look at it.
You know, I think the consensus we always got, it was, it would be better for the town to be able to manage it however they want to manage it, but, you know, do what they want to do. You know, from a private entity, we have different, you know, we would have a different approach, you know, we were managing an operator versus what the town might want to deal with it. So, that's what we always thought. It would be much better just to have it on the town, you know, deed it to the town and let the town do what it has to do.
The main purpose of the park itself, which is...
You need a phone. So...
But it's for people to enjoy.
Correct. It's for people to, it's for town residents to enjoy the view, currently, which they can't pull over. If they pull over, it's extremely dangerous.
Yeah.
Two, they're also making us close the second public overlook, which was on the road. So, you know, but on our side, we do need direction in terms of what is the town looking for, because ultimately, we are committed to building the park, and whether we own it or donate it, that's the secondary.
I think it's great, you know, I mean, it's a great idea to have an overlook and just, I mean, I really, I like it a lot. But yeah, I guess, you know, just my concern is being how, how close to the road the cars are going to be parking, and they're going to be parking in the 100-foot buffer of the SPO. And just these details, I guess, that we need to work out. It would also, I guess, be nice to see just how, how it flows with the restaurant and the orientation of the restaurant, because it appears like right now, the park would be right in the view shed. You know, like if you're designing a restaurant, where do you want some of the best seats to look at? And it would be that direction across the park. And is that ideal, you know? Does it make sense to sort of try to hide the park a little bit more by tucking it in?
For us, for us, it's fine the way it is. You know, trying to bring it back, it would be actually worse, because then it pushes the winery building even further down. And one of the requirements we have there is we're trying to protect the stream that is there. So more, and we also can't move it forward, because then you have more visual impact if you move the building forward. So...
It almost seems like the best place for the winery restaurant would be where your office is now on the other side.
Actually, that was, that was, we used to have a building there before, and that was taken out, and we're not changing those plans for this time. We're not seeking approval for it at this time. And we're not changing those plans at the time.
But when you do come to seek approval for it, if we have the discussion that, you know, when, if everybody unanimously feels like then the winery restaurant should be maybe placed where your current office is and tucked into the hillside there, a little more out of the view shed, I just think it's kind of important.
You know, at that time, we can have whatever conversation needs to happen. There's certain conditions that we got to meet in terms of those winery, the vineyard cottages, either way. So, but, you know, it's hard for me to address some of those comments when we haven't even thought about, you know, designing that building itself, or the other buildings.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's a good time to think about that, though, because it does, it is impacted by the park, and the placement of the driveway, and the easement across the...
The problem is, I think, one of the things people forget is, we spent nine years going through that approval. It's been reviewed. We had four public hearings, like before, I think, before. And it was a plan that it was chosen to be there for a reason in the past. For me to start trying to go back and start to redo all that is just...
Yeah, there was a lot of thought put into, you know, what, where everything is located up in that corner, previous planning board members and...
But it's been nine years and he's...
But that part hasn't changed, though.
I'm sorry?
That part hasn't changed, though. The other parts of the project have, but the inside corner Delaware and Hill hasn't as far as the proposal goes. That remains the same.
Right.
It's kind of like, to me, it's like going back and re-inventing the wheel. You know, we spent years, you know, going back and forth with Silo on what's going to be located within that corner, what's going to be allowed, how far can they go. Where, I remember, you know, we had markers put up for the building location.
We actually build the building out of wood.
They had a 2x4 frame, whatever, of their wall.
That part of the discussion in the, about what should be there and how it should be located and looked, it's already occurred.
But that's still something that you, in the Phase 2 or whatever part of the approval...
Yeah, we still have to go through cycle and approval. And we still, there's, I think, five conditions set forth for that whole area that we have to meet, you know, including, you know, protection of the stream and landscaping requirements, and this is an array of items that we have to do. But for me to try to do that now, it's just, we're not planning on building it anytime soon. We have, that's been thought through for a long time already. So, at the time that that comes to fruition, then we'll review that.
Well, the other part, to me, I want to kind of emphasize, there's been so much discussion about this artisan park. It's, we're talking a small piece of property, and it's the most beautiful view shed point in the town, and they're looking at giving it to the town. And what I'm seeing is that people are making it such a complex process.
Well, I mean, you nailed it on the head. It's the most important view shed. It's the SPO. And we're now about to, you know, now we have five or six cars parked right there.
See, I don't think that that particular spot's the important view shed. I think that's where you get the view shed from, okay? It's not the view. Looking down there and seeing, you know, cars there. It's, you know, it's right outside of the wood line. It's not that big of a deal to me if you, if you talk about...
It's in the hairpin quite a bit more than the wood line.
I understand, I understand.
It's talking a few hundred feet.
But again, we've designed this, you know, over the years.
But don't get me wrong, I really, I mean, the artisan park's a great idea. That's awesome that you guys...
But right now, you see cars parked there, sometimes three at a time.
On the...
Every day.
...by the guardrail.
Which you actually see a lot more than if they were down below.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. It's just one thing I really want us to consider wholeheartedly, because, you know, it is right on the hairpin turn, and it's just important, you know. It is the, it is the most important view shed. And I think, you know, through our, you know, the public comment period and so forth, overwhelmingly, that's what everybody's concerned about. So I think, I think it's worth, I mean, you guys did a lot of great work with the, our consultants and everything talking through this, but it's just, just want to make sure it's going to be right.
Yeah, I know it's going the wrong way. We understand.
Yeah.
Anything else from you? Anybody? Tom? You got, you got to come up to...
Oh, actually, yeah, very good. Thanks, Juan.
Send me a trip. Thank you. Can I do better? It wasn't. Is there anything in this part that conforms to our code?
Yeah, I think a lot of it, a lot of it conforms to the code.
What's part?
I'm not going to go through the whole project here, Tom, would you?
I'm, you're, you've got a 100-foot green one, which you're using up. You're not going to use it. You're going to look at a devastated, flat piece of land that once was the beautiful view. It no longer is. Are we expecting all the other construction to be the same quality Are we expecting all the other construction to be the same quality as removing a mountain? These things, you're, somebody's going to have to make, uh, take it in and abolish the code in order to, to have this park. The town doesn't want it.
The town doesn't want it?
They do not want it.
The town of Amina does not want this park?
That's correct.
Where'd you hear that one?
From all the people, the reason that they-
All the people, I'm, I'm one of those people, I, I disagree with you.
Those people that I talked to.
Ones I talked to overwhelmingly do want it, Tom, so it's a-
Public comment shows they're, they, they want it.
The three, you two, will agree. This thing has gotten out of hand, I started off with him years ago, as he will gladly agree to, with this park in mind. We cannot have lighting in a town park.
There's no lighting.
There's no lighting, Tom.
There's a lot of misconception what the park is about, there's no lighting, there's nothing, there's no utilities, no lighting.
Are you talking about the park for the town reclamation?
The one they're proposing to give us.
All right, there's no lighting there.
There's no lighting.
The, the signs that they want to put up on the road, you're not going to be able to do that either.
Yeah, tho- those are required by DOT.
DOT requires them, Tom, they've got to go up.
Four by, three by four?
Whatever DOT says.
If, you know, those historic signs and what have you are beautiful.
Yeah, they're whatever, they're whatever DOT requires.
But not the advertisement signs.
No, we're not, we're not putting any advertisements on.
Yeah, I'll look at them, yeah.
I'm just saying that all of these things are in violation of our code today. Now, if you want to amend the code and change the whole damn thing, so that you can accommodate these people, it's fine. If you want to look at a barren piece of ground, you're going to be having that. It's faced in a direction that you're going to look behind, uh, McEnroe's house, which gives a good view as well, but primarily down where the ponds are is the true view.
Yeah, I think we might want to sit down with you sometime, Tom, if you get a chance, just to kind of walk through it, through it, would you? Because, I mean, you, you won't be facing McEnroe-
I had the same information you did.
Okay, well, there's no lights.
And it, he's been more than helpful, and I, we've tried to work together to get this part.
Now, Tom, by the, the, where the actual overlook's going to be, the parking lot is back where Mrs. McEnroe is. But where the overlook is, you have to walk-
It's on the hundred foot.
Yeah, but you still have to walk all the way out. So you can actually see all the ponds and stuff. So where the benches are going to be is a good six hundred feet or five hundred feet from our existing driveway.
Yeah.
So you'll be able, from that vantage point, you'll be able to see north, you'll be able to see south, including seeing all the ponds and the whole valley. The parking has been pushed as far back as possible to make sure that, to minimize visual impact of those cars being right on the field.
The code calls for the hundred-foot greenway.
Yeah, the code actually calls for one tree every fifty, uh, every, one tree every thousand square feet, plows, shrubs and stuff. If we were to do that, there'll be no views looking from up there.
The code also allows the planning board to waive certain requirements in the SPO.
This is going- This little bitty park has held up the whole damn words, and it shouldn't have. I want the damn project to go the same as everybody else's.
All right, Tom, we'll-
I want it successful.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Think we need a motion at this point? What do you have now?
If the Silo portion is over, I just want to discuss with the upcoming, for our applicants, upcoming February.
Sure, what do you have?
All right, so Maple Rock will be showing back up on the eleven, distributed in view of the, um, site plan, if you didn't receive it. I hope anybody else that they received it on the email I sent out, we send them out, that's fine. Babe and Julie both received the Maple Rock submission, their submission, addressing Julie's comments. So that'll be coming up, please review when I send it to you, so when they show back up, you'll have questions right-
We had the first meeting in February, right?
February eleventh is our next meeting. So then it would be then February twenty-fifth, uh, four brothers will be coming back for the meeting and drive-in. They're resubmitting their plan, they've gone through the ZBA, they will have their public hearing for the ZBA on the sixteen. Variances then would be granted, and then they have recommendations, so they come back to the planning board with the recommendations from the ZBA. Go ahead, look over those, and then go ahead, and, uh, you have to resubmit a site plan still for that, so everyone else is going to see it. And then we'll be able to-
That's going to cover it?
With that.
Yeah, that's it.
And that should be it, after that. So those two things are coming up in February, and obviously Silo will also, will be on the agenda in February also. If anything else comes down, I'll email to everybody, and that's it.
Okay. One more time, motions?
Make your motion.
Seconds, I-
All right. Video there.